As fast as I can.
Thank you.
Alright. So if anybody get too drunk on your holiday. Just tip. Just tip. Uh, did I make the call to roll thing? You're doing it wrong. You had a couple things. You want to close your...
If you close the executive session...
Yeah, motion to close the executive session. Yeah, the executive session. I'll make a motion to close the executive session.
Should we move to second in discussion? All those who say aye. Okay. Uh, Mr. Griffin, give enough. Any action you took in the executive session?
Okay, the first action that was taken during today's executive session was for the mayor and council to approve signing a letter of intent received from Fulton County in order to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the provision of fire services in the FID area. And here are no objections. That motion passed unanimously. Mr. Attorney, do you want to speak to the other language?
The other item reported out of the executive session is that a finalist was paying for the city manager position.
Okay. Uh, can I pick my own role? And then you want to... You want to close your executive session? I would like to.
I vote that we close the executive session for...
Work session. The work session.
I vote that we close the work session.
Sorry. You have adjourned it. I'm sorry. I'm using a different word. Close the executive session. We just have adjourned the work session meeting.
I vote that we adjourn the work session.
Thank you.
Should we move to second in discussion? All those who favor? That unanimous?
And you did ask me to call the room. Mayor William Bill Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mark Baker. President, Councilmember Catherine Ralph.
Present.
Councilmember Harley Beguns.
Present.
Councilmember Helen D. Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Naiwa Gilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Here.
And Councilmember Cleve.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a four. Uh, thank you so much. We'll have our congratulations now. Catherine, Mark, uh, fifty.
Let us stand. Let us pray. Greatness God, once again you have brought us together. And we thank you for that. We thank you for every purpose that you've given us, every destiny that is in our hands. We ask that your blessing fall upon our mayor and council and upon all of us here. So when this all said and done, oh God, we're doing exactly what you would have us to do. Follow your agenda for this city in Jesus' name we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
Blessed are you, legions.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of council, the first item is approval of the consent agenda. I would like to mention that in your folder at the desk, there were a couple changes to the minutes as requested from the work session of January twenty-third, as requested by Councilmember Gilliard. So we have meeting minutes amended for Tuesday, January twenty-third, meeting minutes from Saturday, January twenty-seventh. That was a community forum at Welcome All Parks, and meeting minutes from a Monday special call meeting, January twenty-ninth, as well as second special call meeting on Wednesday, January thirty-first. The last meeting minutes is a special call meeting on Wednesday, January's, I'm sorry, February seventh. Along with for spreading upon the minutes several agreements submitted by the CFO Frank Malazey on the printed agenda you see in cities, plus Icon, InterDav, Neo, Machine, Milner, Copier, Edmonds, Associates, Vigo Three-Sixty, and Courtware, and finally, a proclamation sponsored by Councilmember Ralph.
I'm going to count in the air.
Mr. Mayor, I vote to approve the consent agenda for February thirteenth, twenty-eighth.
Yeah, five. Second.
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 Should we move to second? Is there any discussion? All those who favor? Oh, the vote, that's unanimous. Thank you. Go ahead, everybody. Okay.
The mayor of Fulton is speaking about what we did here, and that's the next item up for your consideration, is approval of the regular meeting agenda for the purposes of the public and of course, council members. We did have the human resources report earlier today during the work sessions, so that item would be removed from today's extended agenda. In addition to that item, there are two parts and recreation items that were requested to be removed as requested by the mayor. The first item on the agenda today is Roman numeral four, under resolutions, a resolution to develop a park recreation trail and open space master plan that's co-sponsored by Councilmembers Ralph and Gilliard. The mayor's requesting to remove that item from today's agenda. Below that item, Roman numeral seven, also requested to be removed, is a resolution regarding a proposed letter of intent for property located at seventy-three forty-five Old National Highway and seventy-three thirty-five Old National Highway and for other purposes. The mayor's requesting to remove that item as well. Turning over on today's agenda, page four, under ordinances, Roman numeral five, for first reading and ordinance for the main title eleven of the City of South Fulton Code Ordinances, Parks and Recreation, to establish facility rules and regulations for the City of South Fulton Parks and Recreation Facilities and for other purposes that sponsored by Councilmember Ralph. The mayor has also requested to, to remove that item from today's agenda. So there are total of four items. Uh, let me know.
Um, ordinance zero-zero-seven, to establish parks and recreation park of the sidelines. That was supposed to be moved to...
Second.
Yeah, second?
Yes.
Okay. We have change. Did everything? I hope so. I'm not going to make motion though. Religion.
That's the right thing.
Who was missing?
Yes.
Second.
Should we move to second?
Any further discussion? All those who favor? Aye. That unanimous? This question.
The next item on your agenda, since we have not received any pro forma motions for presentation, tonight is public comment. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each, and public comment will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time. I believe we have received seventeen speaker cards. So if the first four speakers would please approach the podium at this time and do all of us a favor by saying your name, the district that you live in, if you happen to know that, so that we can also have some connection with your district representation. Mr. Wayne Heinz.
Yes, sir. Also, and we must have some email, so then we do respond to the question.
Correct. As the mayor has indicated, especially if you did not fill it out on your speaker card, if you would say, stated at the time that you approached the podium, your email address, particularly if you have a specific question that you're hoping is responded to by city staff. Mr. Wayne Heinz, Ms. Barbara McKee, Ms. Sandra Rogers, and Mr. Mike Johnson, please approach the podium at this time.
Mr. Heinz, you can go now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, council, master. Good night and good evening, you guys. Kind of wanted to tell you what the firefighters would like, because we're so close to the train.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Heinz.
No problem. I'll get you a seat.
We're ready. Thank you.
Anyway, for the firefighters to transition from Fulton County to the city during twenty-sixty this Friday. And right now, we're excited, nervous a little bit, but excited, because we're coming out of Fulton County, we've been there for years, and we're really ready to see what we can do now. And we're ready to serve the citizens we've been serving. We know that we're going to have some problems. We know we're solid, we're moving together, and make a positive impact with the service that we know we can do. And one of the things that we're asking for right now is that that man who had been named as the fire chief, and one very few as our fire chief, and we'd like to y'all go ahead and hire him over there so everything can be done, sign the paperwork, get the work. In other words, putting work, making money to pay. So, other than that, I'm excited. I get to call your boss again, and we're going to, we're going to work to make everything work. Now I'm getting that, enjoying working, y'all. We're going to, we're going to talk together, solve together. Thank y'all, Mike. We're going to go and serve you, y'all.
It's citizens of South Fulton. My name is Barbara McKee, and I'm in District Six. So, um, this afternoon, I decided to come out. I haven't been out in a while. I do need to talk about a few things that's going on in my neighborhood. Yesterday, well, Friday morning, my husband had a C. He's actually ill. I called the paramedics, it took twenty-six minutes for them to get there. I live right off South, uh, right off Old National and Creel. Twenty-six minutes. I don't think the clock is right. Um, I just think that's an inappropriate time. So I really would like for us to really, when we get a, when we transfer a medical unit over, to really interview and properly get a timeframe of how long it will take. Thank you, ma'am. The noise on Creel and Old National, I wake up every morning, cars just skid and mistle all kinds of things. So I don't know what's going on with that. Four, five o'clock in the morning, shooting, everything. So as a community leader, I decided to contact some resources. Right here, I hope you have it in front of you, um, the hope, the hope that we and other communities have in store for our community in our hearts and hope to see. I have teamed up with United Way and O-Nera to talk about what we would like in our community. We're inviting all of you out on December twenty-sixth, and we invite citizens to come out and let's talk about our challenges as communities, what we would like to see, farmers' market, youth, jobs, and your opportunity, and really, what's really going on, not just on Old National, but Cliffendale, Chattahoochee Hills. Come out and let's talk with some major leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, February, you heard about the day came out?
February twenty-sixth.
Right.
Oh, you said, you said, no, I'm sorry. February twenty-sixth.
Okay. That's your, your, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, the mayor, council members. My name is Sandra Rogers. I am from District Five. Um, I'm speaking on the ordinance for truck routes. I want to thank you for progress, what I consider to be progress being made by the city council to restrict truck routes from residential streets. I applaud you for listening to the citizens regarding this matter. Actually, it takes unmitigated gall for anybody to even think that you should be able to allow eighteen-wheelers on our residential streets. When I went to the meeting when Union City was rezoning Ralph eighty-five Parkway to manufacturing, the mayor, Vince Williams, and the Galloway group assured me that they would not, that they would put up signage to prevent any of the trucks from coming down our streets, because I've been having a problem. I live on Feldwood. It's been a problem with those trucks. They fly, they speed up and down the streets. And so that was one of the issues that I brought up when I was protesting them being able to rezone that to manufacturing, which they did anyway. And so in order to kind of somewhat placate me, I guess, they said, well, we'll, we'll see, we'll get with your city, and we can put up signs to make sure that, you know, no trucks will be coming down your streets. And now I'm hearing the opposite, that they, they think the trucks shouldn't be able to come down our streets. That's absolutely absurd. And I would be horrified if that would happen, because I was promised the opposite, but I'm not surprised that they would change their minds. Best part for the course. Um, so here we are now, finally getting an ordinance to protect our streets from the big wheelers. I urge you to vote unanimously to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Michael. Mike Johnson, Mr. Reginald Taylor, Ms. Wanda Mosley, Ms. Gwendolyn R. Davis, and Ms. Cynthia Barron, please all approach the podium. Mr. Johnson?
Hi, uh, how y'all doing? I'm Mike Johnson, I'm District Five. It's been a while since I come up here and spoke, but I'm pretty much in the same position as Simon's in, before his, uh, the truck route goes. I mean, you don't see that type of stuff happening in affluence in the other places where people trying to raise their kids. It, it don't even come up for conversation. So you know, we kind of, you guys would, uh, stop Galloway and whomever else, uh, represent these people. We don't care about your money, your representation. You take that mess somewhere else. We don't care about it. That, that's it. You know, they bring these jobs in here, I don't know if they employ people out of our community or not, but I have young kids from age five born up, and I don't care to see that type of stuff. Second of all, for the train, we still got an issue with this train deal off twenty-nine over here, getting into the neighborhood of Mallory and Feldwood. I mean, do somebody got to die before someone step up and say something? And last time I remember speaking, Bill, uh, you were saying that, you know, you got a lot of connection, a lot of time. We need them. Somebody need to call CSX, federal, somebody need to stop the train, just like that today. It's, uh, it's unreal. Yeah, the lady just said a second ago, it took twenty-six minutes for her to get help. But we need to handle the service of, of fire, of whomever these guys are just picking up here and getting talking about all these great things going on. We got to stop this, man. That is unreal. You guys ride down Roosevelt Highway and see this train every day. We have to live with that, every single day. And you got a lot of people working, they can't come to these meetings. And we know you guys got a tough job. We know you guys got a tough job, but we just expect some type of results. That's just it, you know? I mean, I don't know what else to do. I, I thought about myself, even running for one of these seats, and just a couple straight up thorns, somebody's side. Thank y'all. Thank you, y'all.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Reginald Taylor, and I live in District One. Uh, before I get started, I just want to say one thing. You know, the taxpayers only go by what you all post on your meetings, about your meetings. The meetings are supposed to start at seven o'clock, we got to start at ten minutes after eight. That's unacceptable. I know you all busy, and we respect that. I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, moving right along, we got a, a couple of issues that I want to address. Our parent accountability ordinance that Councilwoman Helen Willis proposed is going to be coming before you all very soon. And I encourage you all to do whatever you can to support that ordinance, because it is all our best efforts to do so. Uh, again, Ms. Jackson's ordinance, the lottery ordinance, and I agree with Ms. Jackson one hundred percent, we can't wait no more. We tired of people just hanging around our business. We going to have to do something about that. That's why I'm crying, the way it is right now. And our truck ordinance, yes, we got to deal with that as well. Uh, Georgia Tech University made it crystal clear a couple of days ago that, you know, we got police department, we working with the city of Atlanta, but we going to put something in place to protect our students. They incorporated gun training in their curriculum, and send a crystal clear message, we going to get you if you come to our hip, robbing our folks. You know, we can, we got to do something that are different, we got to be hard, and we got to have our police chief, got to be bad. And everybody going to have to know our police chief. There's no reason to have a police chief and don't nobody know the police chief. Everybody know the police chief. We going out with you. Thank you, Reg.
Good evening. My name is Wanda Mosley. I'm a resident in District Three. I came here to speak about a couple of different issues. One of them, the need for us to have a city manager, but it looks like we're making progress on that, so I'm not going to be the dead horse. I'm going to move on to other issues. Chief among them would be this truck ordinance. This is of extreme importance to the residents in several districts in our city. We are all frustrated and tired of having to fight traffic against those eighteen-wheelers. It has come, it's gotten to a point where it's extremely out of control. We also understand that this particular issue goes hand in hand with economic development. No one here is against economic development. No one here is against more jobs. No one here is against having the tax revenue, but we do not want those things at the expense of our quality of life. We have got to understand the environmental impacts from having these types of trucks and building and all the things that, things that go along with that. Again, no one is against economic development, but we want to protect our homes, and we want to protect our quality of life. Now I understand that most of my grievances are not with this body. In fact, I would like to actually commend you for at least trying to strike a balance between my quality of life and economic development, unlike some other municipalities, who I'm going to name, Union City Chief among them. So understand that we appreciate the work that you all are doing in this area. As citizens, we will stand behind you if and when it comes time that you need to take up a fight with Union City, but also understand, I'm not going to wait for you all to take up a fight with Union City. I will be at their city council meeting next Tuesday, and it will not be to exchange pleasantries. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Davis, and I'm a long-time resident of College Park, now City of South Fulton, some part of City of South Fulton. I'm proud to say that I'm in District Six, got that right, with, with Councilman Cleve. Um, I've come to discuss something that I have heard very much about, and that is, I think, the need for a comprehensive public information system for the new city. Okay? Um, fortunately, my councilman and a number of the others are pretty good with their e-letters or their websites in terms of getting information out, but oftentimes, I and other residents are getting information about important events, not this general meeting in the May, but other things that the mayor and council persons may be involved with, and you oftentimes hear about it, um, after the fact. Sometimes I see it on Mayor Edwards's Facebook page, uh, and while that's a wonderful reference, it's not public information. Okay? Um, I, I got a note on Facebook from, um, the Delta Single Plate Organization about the big rally. When she wrote me back, it was over. I would have been, I'm a very active with community kinds of things, and I would have, I would appreciate it being there. We need a comprehensive information system that includes and updated, and I'm pleased to say that the website has been updated. I noticed that over the last couple of days, okay? But it was a bit embarrassing to look at that website and see that things were not there, you didn't have active information for several weeks, okay? When I say comprehensive, integrated, I'm talking about public information through radio, television, newspapers, street signs. Not everyone is online, okay? I understand from Commissioner, Councilman Cleve that, uh, completely, I'm sorry, that our older citizens, and I'm among those older citizens, we're online, but our younger people are not. We need to try to find ways to reach the broad population, and let me say, please, let's make this a priority versus branding. Branding is like having dessert when you haven't had a dinner. Thank you.
Cynthia Barron, the next four speakers, please approach the podium. Mr. David Callahan, W. Woody, W. Woodson Galloway, I think this is Vance Coleman, and Ms. Beverly Young, Ms. Barron.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council members. My name is Cynthia Barron. I reside in the Forest Town subdivision. I apologize, but I'm uncertain if that falls under District Three with the Honorable Willis or District Seven with the Honorable Mark Baker, which is it, please? Forest Town subdivision, one mile down the street. Okay. Um, my concern is, in two thousand and fourteen, the home right next to me burned out. At that point in time, I sent an email to Ms. Banji Watkins, to Mr. Wayne Wright, Mr. Tommy Hayes, Mr. Stanley Fletcher, uh, Fletcher, and the inspector at that time was Richard Coker. At that particular time, um, a bunch of, of my neighbors kept calling, we never got a response. Um, I retired December first on federal government, so mine is really determined that something needs to be done, because that house is definitely a place used to store, store stolen property, it's a hated for drug users, and as well as an environmental security hazard, and definitely an eyesore. This morning, I called code enforcement, it was an act of Congress trying to get a live person, and once I got someone, I was, um, met with total resistance. Um, I was even told that I was listening to fake news. Um, so my concern is, um, I would really like to know who I could reach out to, um, via email, me in person. Me and four other neighbors have decided that we are going to take this on. We take, thank you for your time.
He was drinking water.
Yes, it was on the car.
I have perks. Yes, I do have it.
Thank you.
My name is David Callahan, and I live in the sixth district. My email address, DACallahan51@gmail.com. Specifically, I live in Hillendale Estates. And we've had quite a problem with dump trash dumping. Um, we had the problem with the Delta Airline garbage bags being used to dump trash in our neighborhood. Um, I tried to take this to code enforcement, and I reported it several times to code enforcement. I went to the police department precinct on Old National, they told me to call the code enforcement. Um, when I have been able to get through to code enforcement, they tell me if it is not in a yard, they have no jurisdiction over it. So, um, in some cases, it isn't a yard. We have a house at six zero four-four Hillendale Drive, of garbage in the backyard, garbage in the front. Uh, it was a drug house up until last week. Um, I contacted, I did contact eleven alive, they came out and did a story, and Delta Airlines came out and picked up the trash, but within two or three days, it was out again. Uh, I keep seeing signs that say that there are significant fines for illegal dumping. I would like to know how many fines have been imposed since the city was created for illegal dumping? Somebody can get that information too, I would appreciate it, and, um, I would also like to see some actual effort on the part of code enforcement to take action, because the house has yet to have any kind of indication on it, the code enforcement has even been out. Thank you for your time.
Would you just repeat your email info, should we get it right? Is your email in the car? Can you notice it?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Is my email in the car?
Mayor, members of council, my name is Woody Galloway, thirty-five hundred Lenox Road. Um, I'm here to speak on the truck ordinance. Um, contrary to the representation date earlier, I am not here to speak against the truck ordinance, I'm here to speak in support of it. Um, we do have, um, one concern about it, but contrary to expectations, we do hear complaints all the time about trucks entering into residential areas, they're not supposed to be there, they shouldn't be there, and they need, there needs to be some enforcement to stop that. They'll need truck ordinances to, uh, instruct route restrictions to do that, and so we support that. That being said, the map that is associated with the ordinance does have some areas that we feel like don't need to be in restricted areas. Specifically, I'll, I'll pass out a map in a minute, but they're very, very narrow. Uh, for example, you've got areas that... Is it on the U B N card?
Mayor, members of council, my name is Woody Galloway, thirty-five hundred Lenox Road, I'm here to speak on the truck ordinance. Contrary to the representation date earlier, I am not here to speak against the truck ordinance, I'm here to speak in support of it. We do have one concern about it, but contrary to expectations, we do hear complaints all the time about trucks entering into residential areas, they're not supposed to be there, they shouldn't be there, and they need, there needs to be some enforcement to stop that, and they'll need truck ordinances to instruct route restrictions to do that, and so we support that. That being said, the map that is associated with the ordinance does have some areas that we feel like don't need to be restricted areas. Specifically, I'll pass out a map in a minute, but they're very narrow. For example, you've got areas that where portions of roads are restricted are the quickest route from industrial, existing industrial, to either eighty-five or to South Fulton. You don't want to create confusion and show those areas as restricted when they shouldn't be and aren't under the terms of the actual ordinance itself, and the garbage itself. We support signs going up, the one earlier indicated, a previous zoning on Royal South, absolutely no trucks should go on Felwood North from Royal South, north onto Felwood, there are these signs put there, and we would support that. However, going south to get to eighty-five, that's where the trucks should go from the industrial area along Royal South to get back to eighty-five. Likewise, on Flat Shoals from Buffington, you've got a concentration of industrial on Buffington right at Flat Shoals, that area is shown as being restricted going back to the interstate, that does not need to be restricted, it should not be restricted, because that is the closest route to get back to the interstate. And also, up near Chick-fil-A, that area, one Buffington, does not need to be restricted because it connects to the truck. I will return these in and look at them later.
I have a statement I think I'll change, listening to the gentleman before me, I want to say, good job on the truck ordinance. Now, my name is Thant Coleman.
Mr. Coleman, if you could, we might record that, so he can hear.
My name is Thant Coleman, I'm in District Four, I am your sons, brothers, grandsons. I led the implementation of the Affordable Care Act on behalf of Blue Cross Blue Shield in Western New York, Northern New Jersey, for Fidelis Care, which is Medicare and Medicaid in New York City, and also the state of North Carolina. My work behind the lines helped to ensure that over ten million people receive access to health care. I have no health care background. Understand that I also was asked to present on behalf of CMS, best practices for insurance companies and large entities, to determine impact relative to the mandate, translate that impact into strategic plans in order for them to meet the mandate and serve the public. I have led the mandates and compliance portfolio at North Carolina Blue Cross for the last two years, that has represented about six hundred thousand labor hours of work, about forty million in budget, and I'm very proud of it. I say that not to brag, but to make a point. Had anyone told any of you council members that you would've been ineffective at your job because you hadn't previously been a council member, or because you hadn't worked with the city, I would say poppycock to that. I would say that anyone that would tell me that I may be ineffective as a city manager, or any manager in any capacity with the city, might be just as myopic or short-sighted. I'm asking you that in the future, please consider me and folks like me when writing the job descriptions, I and they would love to apply. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Beverly Young, my name is David, and I've been having my email, only Khalil and Mark have been emailing me, and I'm very popular at y'all meetings, but number one, I want you all to stay off the news, stay off the news, because if y'all have no rapport between y'all, how can we trust y'all? Y'all on the news, saying one thing, doing another, and then when we come to the meeting, we hear another thing. Stay off the news, stay off social media, get your facts right before you write something on Facebook, on Nextdoor, get your facts right, because a lot go a long way, and it can be for slander, okay? Number two, we all got our own rights to say what we wanna say, and vote what we wanna vote for, so get your facts right, stay off the news, be the city council that we want y'all to be, long as y'all on the news, we can't trust y'all. 'Cause we hear one thing, you're doing another, you're arguing amongst yourselves, and how can we ever make it in the community, trust you all when the news getting, and they getting it wrong? Have a question.
The next five speakers are Ms. Dean Licorice, so I have Dean Licorice, Ms. Glenda Collins, Ms. Evelyn Parham, Mr. John Jones, and last but not least, Ms. Ivory M. Denson. Of all five of you, would you please approach the podium, Mr. Licorice?
How y'all doing? I'm here not to just only address you, but the entire audience. I met Mr. Edwards when I was the president of the West River Morris Association, and at that time, we had a lot of trauma in our neighborhood, and I was anxious to put his feet to the fire, because I felt like the police station was right in that building. And, so I rallied up everybody in the neighborhood, and he came here, and he said six words that made me feel kinda silly, he said, why didn't you tell me sooner? Well, he did actually solve the problem, it was really easy, everything went quickly, and he could go with the good for four. All right, now, with that being said, he has my complete trust, I trust Mr. Edwards, whatever he's involved in, involved in. So, I'm bringing to you a new problem. My friend Myron was murdered last month at a gas station, at the Chevron around the corner, in front of his job where he works at a pizza shop. Just had a baby, and I'm a little disturbed by that. There was a big commotion about the name of our city, some people didn't like it, it even made the news, but I don't care if we call it Mayberry, and we're still dealing with overwhelming crime and murder, it's still called the hood. It's not easy to be in a leadership position, and I wouldn't present a problem without presenting a solution. We as citizens should be working with the police, and the police should not make us feel frightened and call them. We should be one big team, and we should be on the news with positive stories, and with the citizens telling criminals, don't bring that mess here. So, I want people to know to call the police, if you hear a car switch, call the police, make them do their job, that's what they get paid for, that's what they want us to do. Call the police, and get the crime out of here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Glenda Collins, District Five, Fairwood Community Association. The community would like to know if it would be feasible for the mayor and city council to set up a job fair for teenagers during the spring break, or at the end of the school year. Also, I would like to talk about the truck ordinance. Our city has been inundated by warehouses in the city, on the edge of the city, and because of these warehouses, trucks are needed to move these products. These trucks, they weaken the foundation of our homes, shake our windows, and our doors, and not only that, the trucks traveling on our streets causes pollution, and which is detrimental to our health. So, we need to work to control these trucks, because once your foundation is compromised in your home, and your health has gone awry, it creates a great problem in your life. So, someone needs to look at this, look at it very carefully, and consider the citizens of the city, because we did not come this far, this far, to be pushed with these warehouses. It is time for somebody to take a stand, and also, we need to know where the boundaries are for our city. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Evelyn Parham, and I live in District Five. I thank God for this day, that an ordinance has been brought forth, not so much the trucks, it's the drivers that drive all of our neighborhoods, speeding, screeching up to the red light behind me, when the red light is red, it is a very hazardous thing. This is not just about money. I've lived here in South City of South Fulton forty-something years, this never has been happening before, and now that we have you all here, we want it stopped. I went to a meeting at Union City to bring some brief about some things that was happening with their warehouses and the manufacturing plant, by the way, that's gonna put out toxins, so if you all want to die, don't get suicide, just keep living right there by that thing. So, anyway, and I was told by the mayor and the council, you don't put any money in our account, so yo boys does the count. If you are not a part of this city, and you don't have the best interests of us at hand, get up out of the seat, get in the room. Because we deserve to be taken care of, we deserve that. I love you all, I pray for you, and I believe in you to do the right thing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, people persons, my name is John Jones, I'm in District Five, and a couple of things I wanted to talk about tonight, and one is concerning the truck ordinance. Now, I'll start this, but I think most of us heard about the Guinnessburg threat, where they said, this is government of the people, by the people, it's part of the people. Now, the Guinnessburg threat doesn't say anything about government of the corporations, by the corporations.
Amen.
It ain't why we do this. Because we want you to put the citizens first, in the fifth district, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, sixth, and seventh district. This is what we elected you all to do, and I think we're gonna entrust this to do this. Now, also, we know that you all have a tough job, I've been in a similar situation before, and I know you can't get everything done in one day, in one week, but there are some organizations, I think that was something that Sandy Spring used years ago when they started their city, it was somebody, what, CM Two, or some administrative organization, would you consider using people like that, or maybe this company, to handle the things that you all have time to do, you've got other things that you've gotta take care of in your districts, and maybe they can help do some of the mundane things that you all won't be able to do, and please consider that. But the main thing is, we want you all to, don't forget, put us first, we know we need businesses, we know we need money in our area, but we also need help to keep from getting our communities polluted with the other organizations, and other cities, and doing what they wanna do at our expenses, and we need you to work with the state, the other cities, and I've asked this before, please work with them to find some kind of parameters so we can all live together peacefully, and everybody will benefit. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ivory Morris Benson, and I live in District Two. I am here for you tonight to express my concern about the nine-one-one system. I know it's on my two lines, and I'm only for myself on my command line, there's a fear we won't, or nine-one-one service, now, I don't know whether with the new city, that that money's only going to the new city, or if it's collected by Fulton County, so one of y'all can find out for certain, but I'm concerned because as it stands now, my neighbor and I wanted to call, and now that I have gotten the home phone, doing consumer center for older people, Street Two, I guess one of us has a cell phone, so now if I call nine-one-one, unlike before when I had an AT&amp;T phone, that nine-one-one operator will not, my address will not show up. So, the person that mentioned someone taking twenty-something minutes, the lady, the young lady, whose car ran into a pool of water, or a woman in a puddle, it was enough for her to drown, it was on the TV, on twenty-twenty, one of those shows. I am concerned about that. The technology is available, so if you're gonna be entering into any contract or agreement, or franchise fees, or whatever it is, we need a nine-one-one system, so that if I'm having a stroke and can't talk, and tell me where I am, that my address will show up. And two thousand and eighteen, that technology is available, and we need to add it. I am a senior citizen now, here in mid-seventies, and I don't wanna die in my home because I couldn't get anyone to come and lend assistance to me, so please check into that, because a lot of seniors still live in this new city, and we don't wanna die like that. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, at the bottom of page two of today's regular meeting agenda, is a resolution that was held on October tenth, and again on January twenty-third, a resolution of the City of South Fulton, Georgia, executing a cooperation agreement between the city and the South Fulton Community Improvement District, and to provide an effective rating.
And on January twenty-third, the meeting they presented, and I particularly asked a number of questions, they said that they would provide answers, and I sent an email asking for those answers, and again, I hadn't received any of that. So, we don't have to hold this in public.
On page three, resolution to urge the Georgia General Assembly to oppose de-annexation legislation to create new municipalities, providing for stability, repealing inconsistent resolutions, providing an effective rating for other purposes. This resolution is co-sponsored by council members Giliard, Brown, Gomes, and Willis. It's under Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero zero five.
This is our second meeting, everyone was in agreement with it during the first meeting, and what it is, is this port of the City of Stockbridge, Eagles Landing, is a community in Stockbridge that wants to be annexed and become their own city, which would just devastate the City of South Fulton. So, we're standing with the City of Stockbridge, with GMA, the Georgia Municipal Association, that supports it, and other cities as well. So, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this.
I very much in support too, because this whole corrupt annual issue, and if you know the situation of Stockbridge, they're trying to annex all of the commercials from that private city that we've done, so I just think, there are these annexations, and getting around, trying to do it a different way, once it's done, it's done, and there's no right to give us our, I'm willing to send support.
Thank you.
I say, possibly move to second in the further discussion, I'll go with the table that you had. Next resolution, sponsored by council member Gomes, a resolution to require certain protocols for citizens making public comments, to institute a process of responding to citizens' questions, provided in-city council meetings, providing transparency and accountability for the City of South Fulton, and for other purposes, this is under Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero zero six.
Well, I think we've kinda cleared it up, and also too, as the audience was standing here, we are trying to get your email addresses, so we can be a responsive government to your questions, so we wanna make sure that we can support you when we come to the podium and ask questions, and that's what this is about, so this will be opened up, and you'll find that the responses, if we're not able to contact And you'll find that the responses, if you're not able to contact, it can be an email and you can find those responses on our website. So that's what it is.
Then you just called to the microphone and said that you asked questions you haven't been answering. So I was, I thought it was a short conversation.
And there was a change from the last time that we, from the first reading. And that was, we had a prohibition in regards to just having any court residence of the city. Now, it is open up so that you don't want to let it bother those responses as well. And we have that changed. So if you'd like, would like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
I say, pop the move to second in the discussion. Aye. In President's discussion, all those favor aye. That's asking them. Next resolution, under Roman numeral five, a resolution to require financial impact statements for any proposed ordinances and resolutions and for other purposes. This resolution under 2018 dash zero zero eight is sponsored by Mayor Edwards.
This is very simple. When you make, what's the, they said that the financial impact on the city, we go from with that financial impact. Fast example, if you wanna build, make a resolution building a swing at the park, we need to know where that swing goes. It's basically what it is. And it gives us a better opportunity to make up in our mind, you know, if we're gonna vote for it or against it. So it's just a, a financial responsibility on our part. And let you know what's the thing we're gonna cost. I live in Fulton.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2018 dash zero zero eight to institute financial impact statements on where that this new resolution is.
I say, pop the move to second in discussion. I understand.
So I have a couple of concerns. I have seen, from that side of the podium, I've seen lots of good ideas die from the study today. And I'm worried that the level of analysis that has been asked for could limit innovation for programs that don't really cost that much. And also, sometimes it is hard to know what the collateral savings might be of a program. So for example, a program that works at human analysis that ends up reducing the population, I mean, ends up producing a risk could have some far-reaching impact. It can't quite be analyzed in a statement. The section six says that all resolutions and parts of resolutions, comfortable with this resolution, are hereby repealed. So I am worried that we could repeal things that we already passed as well as the forty-three ordinances that are already in the queue that may or may not have those financial impacts. I think that that is something that we should look at. So one of the things I would like to make a motion to amend that, to strike Section Six. I also want to note that currently, if you passage a resolution, it takes effect immediately. Section D, Section Two D says that the approval will be required by city manager, which we do not have. And finally, again, that's mentioned again in Section Four. That, I'm sorry, I'm getting my section mixed up. And the, in Section Three, another concern I have is that sponsors of any proposed ordinance or resolutions where such exists are required for preparation and submission. So those of us that are laypeople would have to prepare our own financial impact statements. And in order to do that, we would have to have access to city staff members, again, who are city managers, which we currently don't have. And then finally, the last line of Section Four says that whether a financial impact statement meets the requirements, if that's a mayor's discretion, I believe that that should be the CFO or our budget manager's discretion. It should be the discretion of an appointed, not an elected individual with a background in financial analysis. So I will just go over those again. At that point, I would like to change the last line. I'm making a motion to make a amendment, to change the last line of Section Four to the requirements of the CFO or budget manager's discretion. And I would like to strike line six, that all resolutions and parts of resolutions, in concert with this resolution, would be repealed effectively immediately.
Mr. Lee, I can't accept, I can't accept your hearing. You can't concede or grant a definite order. Would I let the council attend?
In looking at Section Six, the intent there is for the text of this resolution, if anything is in conflict with the text of this resolution, it doesn't create a retroactive impact for the resolution. But if that needs to be noted to satisfy the council, that's completely, would be completely reasonable from a legal perspective. But all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict would speak to the requirements of this resolution. For example, if there was a resolution saying that there didn't need to be a financial impact statement, that would be what would be rescinded.
And you're right, for us, citizens to have that, and they would be okay with that.
Instead, just so I'm clear, you would like to have a line that says that this resolution shall not have a retroactive impact?
I agree.
This is a process that's instituted throughout metro Atlanta and several cities. I think it's an important process. As we move forward to transition and stand up our city, it's important for us to be fiscally responsible in doing so. So I'm glad that this resolution is in process. We are looking to explore paying for master plans. There were several master plans created on a county level. Master plans are not cheap. So when we make resolutions or ordinances that call for master plans, we do need to know the financial impact of those items. As we move forward to transition our services and we create policies and resolutions, we do need to know the financial impact. We need to watch our tax dollars. As we move forward to hiring key positions and we think about, you know, ways that we don't normally do things, we need to know the financial impact. This is a new city, and it's important to our residents that we be fiscally responsible. This is another way to ensure residents that we're being fiscally responsible in exploring all matters before we make decisions, financially. So I support this resolution. I will encourage my colleagues to support this resolution. The fact that we don't have a city manager is disingenuous to say. Everybody knows that until we hire a permanent city manager, that our mayor is acting in that role. He wasn't, he didn't ask to be city manager.
Let me, let me see what I'm thinking about. Let's go.
My question was regarding this resolution. It did go through our board that we talked about this previously. Because this is just a management decision, and we're supposed to go on and say.
That don't happen.
So this is the first meeting.
No, it's not.
Why?
It doesn't. It doesn't apply.
We didn't need to leave the fire process because there was some resolutions that were postponed within the street's people working.
You want to repair that?
About the process for resolutions? Or, yeah, the resolutions only require a first-year agreement. It can't be placed in the meeting. If the council desires to kinda have a process where the resolutions are placed on a work session and then later on, that's currently not in place, but if the council wants to do it, then that's something.
So what I, what I'm hearing is that we have a consistent process because last week we had resolutions that weren't on the work session. They haven't been rated since. So this one did not go through that same process, one on the three hundred. So we need to have a consistent process of how it's gonna be reviewed, unless it's an emergency.
I kinda wanna deal with some things that I heard Councilwoman Willis say. Actually, financial impact statements are a standard in municipal governments. I too support it. I think we have to be transparent in terms of how we're spending money and make that available to the public. Because there is not, you know, we may be passing something that's equivalent of a funded mandate. And I understand what, you know, we charge our employees and staff to do. And so I think it's, I fully support it.
Let me just say, I do understand what the council on Gomes is saying. We could have a work session held in discussion with him. And I would introduce him in one field that you get our practical projects, that something needs to be changed, we didn't even know. The last thing, Mr. Lee, is to your question and to their comment, most of this is about the great depositing. They go feasibility step over a certain amount of money. That's how I feel for free. For free for sixty million dollars. But for something like that, have a feasibility step to come back with everything you had. So some places go even farther than that. At some point in time, we may say after a certain amount of money, we may have to even inject a feasibility step. Okay? Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Okay? In President's discussion, all those favor. So the question.
With the amendments.
Okay, with the amendments. That's next.
The last resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Gillyard, under Resolution 2018 dash zero zero eleven, Roman numeral eight, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of South Fulton, Georgia and Fulton County, Georgia, for the provision of police. Somebody calling my name.
The fire station. Zero zero nine.
So there's an agenda item under Roman numeral six.
Yes.
Okay. Two lines. Resolution to approve and designate fire department areas of operations and for other purposes. This is Resolution 2018 dash zero zero nine.
Mayor, I can speak to this resolution. This is an approval of the fire service delivery map that's required in order for the City of South Fulton's fire department to meet approval and obtain a certificate of compliance from the Georgia Fire Fighter Standards and Training Council. The maps are attached as an exhibit to the resolution. It shows the stations as well as the coverage areas.
Okay, that's a requirement that we mentioned, a requirement that we would join.
Not until this is passed. This is, this will hold up the approval process until this, until the maps are adopted.
I understand if this is passed. Is it gonna interfere with our target date?
No.
To bring fireworks?
No. It should not interfere with our target date for the fire on February 26th. In fact, we need this in order to get to the Georgia Standards and Training so that all of our firefighters won't have to go back through a certification process.
I'm just curious about the fire stations, how they just find. Are we keeping these numbers because they're kinda all over the place? Is there some reason for that? Is it just because that's what was on the count?
Well, no, we actually went through a little process to get the numbers kinda in line. Remember when we were up in the north? The Third Battalion was basically numbers that were odd numbers. And it was easier for us to keep it that way. The only one that didn't get an odd number was Station Two. That was because of the annexations. But the numbers, they're just indigenous to the stations. They don't, they don't impact what you're doing.
Mayor, I vote to approve Resolution 2018 zero zero nine, establish fire station service areas.
I say, just pop the move to second in discussion. Here in none, all those favor. Aye. That's your ten. It takes you to the one I tried to announce earlier, the provision of police services for the Fulton Industrial District and citizens of the Fulton Industrial Boulevard area and for other purposes. This is to provide for an intergovernmental agreement between the City of South Fulton and Fulton County. It's sponsored by Councilmember Gillyard, under Resolution 2018 dash zero eleven.
So everyone, the Fulton Industrial Boulevard, but history, is the only area in Fulton County that is still unincorporated. And so the purpose of this resolution is to let Fulton, the Fulton Industrial Area, know that we are really serious about providing police services for them. To let Fulton County know that we're really serious about providing police services for them. To let all, to let all of our citizens know the same thing. And we intend to make it the best service for the population. So that is the purpose of this, this resolution. And as you know, the police department is coming over to us by March 26th. And so this will be another part of the services. We already providing services now, anyway. So this will be a formal agreement between us and Fulton County to provide this service.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018 dash zero eleven for to provide police services to FIA.
I say, yes.
Pop the move to second in discussion. Here in none, all those favor. That's your ten. It takes you to the ordinance on today's agenda for second reading. The first item is co-sponsored by councilmembers Brown, Willis, and Jackson, ordinance 2018 dash zero zero three, and ordinance to establish the City of South Fulton Truck Hoops Ordinance as Chapter Two, Title Eight of the City of South Fulton Code Of Ordinances.
I have a damn motion. I'll make a motion that we pass the truck ordinance exactly as city.
So pop the move to second discussion, Willis.
The audacity for Union City to send their legal team to come ask us to make provisions to send trucks here to sort of route to all the different communities to that district. Union City has where, not only does these trucks impact our, impact pollution, our infrastructure, they don't even take us into consideration when they put up warehouses. I wake up every morning to an earthquake because the Coca-Cola distribution center is shaking all the homes on our street. Not only is it going to do that, is it doing that, but they're going to send traffic through our residential community. They don't think about us at one time when they make decisions. They will be a damn need because our city manager will ask us to make changes to an ordinance that our residents have asked for. It is totally disrespectful. This ordinance will not change. And guess what? If the trucks are caught on the city of South Fulton streets, you will get a ticket. Plus the owner will too.
Mayor, do you remember when you were commissioner? When you were commissioner, I petitioned hard and we worked hard trying to get Martha on flat shows. We were told that Martha could not go over that tributary bridge. Do you remember? Now you have eighteen-wheelers going up and down flat shows over that tributary bridge. Fulton County does not even allow their bus drivers to drive over that bridge with schoolchildren on it. They can come past it without them, but not with them on it. So you have eighteen-wheelers going up and down flat shows, impeding our traffic with our schools. We have gone to Union City, you know how many Union Cities. And basically, the entire council voted to approve zoning to impede our area. And this is affecting flat shows in District Five. So I can't help it.
Councilwoman Willis. Are you able to address the front to be imparted in the role of...
Yes, I sent that email over to our legal team and I did ask them to remove that provision. I did ask them to remove that provision out of the ordinance. I sent it to Brian and Layton. It is... The only thing I would change that, and why I'm asking to change this, because residents are complaining about people who have, who work for commercial companies, bringing the trucks into the community, parking the commercial trucks into their residential community. So I think we need to strike that provision out of our ordinance to prohibit that. If they, if you drive for a company and, or you own a commercial truck, you need to take it to a truck stop. Don't bring it into the community because... I sent, I sent an email over to our legal today, so they won't...
Yes, it's in, and just, there needs to be a friendly movement. I believe the motion on the floor was to adopt this as written as is, so we need to have an amendment that is removed and... And I would also, I would like to draw your, a potential typo. It may, it may not be, but if you look down in subsection D, it says that such delivery or pickup shall not be made between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. I think it needs to be reversed to where there's no pickup or delivery shall not be made between the hours of seven PM and seven AM. Send back to all set.
I make a motion to amend ordinance 2018 dash zero zero three, section A dash two two zero three, item B. And it would remove, remove the personal residence. So restricted vehicles leaving or returning to its customary storage location. So it's, it's actually a... Or a commercial... Restricted vehicles leaving or returning to its customary storage location at the owner or operator's personal residence, that we would strike that. Is that correct? And then so it's saying that for a commercial or industrial location in the city, we can, and we keep everything after that. Right? Right? And then the second party is I would amend section D of the same, section eight dash two zero zero three, and change the hours from seven PM to seven AM. In section D, okay, or D thirteen? Changing between the hours of seven AM and seven AM. Correct?
Yes. I accept those two. I just, yeah, I understand it would take the truck drivers a little longer to get their designation, or maybe that they'll have a long time to think about how to drive on our road.
Let me just say this. This ought to go past, I don't know, dash ten. But you all are part of the enforcement. If it's going to work. Can I just go in the corner and say, if it's going to work? You're going to take a picture. You're going to have to do something. Because that's all of what, you make these points in the laws and the first of the country, where it involves on my streets, where the police is out there killing. You know, you can come to a street that day. So if you would help us, help us, I think we can make this work.
I just want to add so that everyone's acknowledge that we are not anti-industrial development or warehouse. They just belong in a certain place and they do not belong in our backyard.
Can we make it, make it immediately?
Today, right now.
We're about to what?
Do thirty days to them to do themselves. So that they can notify here, like sometimes we receive... So again, I've been working on it. They said we need to give at least thirty-nine days notice and I think we should honor that. That was a recommendation so they can notify all the commercials and businesses in the city. So, um... So...
Thirty days from February thirteenth.
So March fifteenth? Yes, it's March fifteenth. Effective day. Effective Monday, so we amend section five forty-three.
I accept that.
Yes, you have three, so there's two motions on the floor. One was to approve and the second one was the motion to amend three amendments as presented. So I think you may, you may need to resolve all the amendments first and then approve the ordinance as amended.
To make a motion, are you willing to do it? To make the motion with the amendment, Ms. Gilliard?
Yes, we'll accept. Yes.
Continuing on page four, under Roman numeral two, also for second reading. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Jackson under ordinance 2018 dash zero zero four, an ordinance to create title fifteen of the city of South Fulton code ordinances, offenses, to establish offenses related to criminal street gangs to provide for authority to combat the growth and activity of criminal street gangs and for other purposes.
This ordinance is on its second read. This is discussed at last city council meeting. This is derived directly from state law. It is the prescribed means for combating criminal street gang activity. So the criminal code is actually following ordinance. And so this would, yeah, this would create chapter six of the criminal code. Ultimately, the law will depend on which one you sign first, but it ultimately will not matter though.
Good evening, Mayor. My recommendation would obviously be to adopt the criminal code first because I believe this would go into the criminal code, is that, that's my understanding, counsel?
So the effective date under the charter is, is the date of signature by the mayor. So we would recommend that the mayor sign the criminal code first, but, and the gang ordinance second. But in terms of how they're adopted tonight, I don't, I don't see that being a problem.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2018 dash zero zero five and ordinance 2018 dash zero zero four.
Properly move to second in further discussion. I just want to say I'm a little nervous about this ordinance, but I do believe in Ms. Jackson. And I do believe in our beliefs, so I believe in the council. Here we go. All go to favor.
Okay, so you saved me the opportunity not to announce the second one, and both of them are combined.
Right.
Okay, good. Roman numeral four, for first reading. This is co-sponsored by Councilmember Rouse and Councilmember Gomes, ordinance 2018 dash zero zero six, an ordinance to adopt the City Smoke Free Act of 2017.
I think this is the second. That you're the second.
I'm sorry, well, under work session. Ready for the next item? So under Roman numeral six, sponsored by Councilmember Jackson, ordinance 2018 dash zero zero eight, also for first reading, an ordinance with all the duties and powers of city department heads providing for their employment and for other purposes.
I can speak to this ordinance. This ordinance was requested by Councilwoman Jackson. It derives its authority for this ordinance under the city charter, section seven point one six. In terms of what it provides, fairly straightforward. Each city department shall be managed by a department head. A department head shall work under the direction of the city manager. It shall be appointed and serve in accordance with four point one zero E and three point two five one of the city charter, as referenced in the city charter. During the transition period into absence of the city manager, department heads may be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the governing authority of the city, which is the mayor and city council. Department heads may be nominated for consideration by any individual city council member. The appointment and termination of each department head during such period, if one exists, must be executed according to sections three point one five and three point two one of the city charter. Each department head shall be responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of the department and shall make decisions and recommendations regarding personnel and budget matters.
I just, I just ask that we consider changing this during the transition period and changing the... So during the transition period, okay, it currently says during the transition period and in the absence of a city manager. I would decide what you said during the transition period or in the absence of a city.
It is the first reading, but I, to your point, even if we found ourselves without a city manager in the future, I think the tran, if we leave the transition periods a kind of lot, so in the absence of a city manager, it would be appropriate.
That takes you to purchasing. And you'll notice that's a new section under the business portion of your agenda. The Information Technology Director, Mr. Strickland, is presenting a Microsoft licensing procurement utilizing statewide contracting in the amount up to two hundred thousand dollars.
Namor Strickland, Information Technology Director. So this is basically your Microsoft licensing for all of the employees coming over with the license that they need to include these servers, desktops, as well as the fire station. I did do a, a little summary to try to explain what it was, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Strickland? I make a motion.
Okay, this is...
Yeah, this is action.
Yeah, it's action.
Did we have a pause or something?
Yes, up to two hundred thousand.
It's on page three oh eight.
This is an action, right, Mr. Flur?
Yes, sir.
I vote to approve the purchase of Microsoft licensing presented to us by Director of the Office, Namor Strickland.
First second. Properly move to second in discussion.
Are we going into a, what length of contract?
The enterprise agreement is a three-year agreement. Yeah, so what they do is they spread payments over three years to kind of minimize the capital.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all go to favor. Passing to members.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item is a nomination by Mayor Edwards. I know we numbered one earlier.
I would just like to have the, I would like to, like you said, we do have a nominee, not nominee, but what happened, what happened for this?
In terms of the city manager position. So at this point, the action taken in executive session today was that a finalist was named for the city manager position. Now, under state law, fifty dash eighteen dash seventy-two A eleven, there's a fourteen day period before final action can be taken by the governing authority of the city. But during that period, this finalist, or name a finalist, that does not, being named a finalist does not indicate an offer of employment, does not indicate any promissory effect on behalf of the city. It is merely that a candidate has been named as the, as a finalist candidate.
Okay. And that's what we said, this may, during the fourteen day period, what do I have to make?
If a, if a public request, under the statute, under state law, if a public records request is made for information regarding the finalist, that will be made available pursuant to the finalist approving the release of that information. State law does provide that finalists can decline that information to be released and in doing so, they rescind their candidacy. But... But, but during that 14-day period, if, if a member of the public requests an open records request from the city, that information will be provided pursuant to that statute.
Thank you.
Just before the, before the minute of our ordinance, could you tell people how they would make an open records request?
Absolutely. You can make an open records request by emailing Mark Massey, C. Kirk, or emailing us directly at the Robbins Firm. Mark, I don't know, I can't remember your email address off the top of my head, but
Mark Massey, at city yourself, coattailga.com.
Yeah, and the process is generally, if we do not receive a request directly, Mark will forward a request to us and will, will fulfill that request. My email is david.dub@robbinsfirm.com.
Okay, thank you. At this time, this vote will, at this time, I would vote for a nomination for a term, right? Is that the reason, is that the reason? Would be our only here?
Technically, it could be either way. You guys would prefer to go to the executive session to discuss personnel, if that's what my idea is.
This meeting, if you, if you're desired to go to the executive, I have no problem with that. Who else, who else, would like to go in the executive session? Ray James.
Three.
I'm going to take one, we're going to take it.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for that person.
But we're not finished with the agenda.
We're not.
We have other reports.
I know, so we, I just want to make sure you guys take the session. Okay, go ahead.
All right, the next item is under number nine of the reports. As I mentioned earlier, we heard the human ser, human resources report during the work session. So, the next presentation is being made by Ms. Kathleen Vaughn, the grants administration presentation.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Vaughn, and I just wanted to present a status report of the work that's been done in grant administration for the city. All right, so our agenda is guiding principles, process overview, and then some of the identified grant funding sources at the federal, state, and private sector levels. And then, of course, next steps. So, the guiding principles, this is a little different from what I have, but basically, it's, the CFO and the grant administrator will work with, play an active role in working with the governing body to implement citywide long and short-term plans in line with their priorities. The responsibilities, the grant administrator staff assists city staff with grant project and development, grant funding, research, proposal writing, project implementation, technical assistance, grant administration oversight, and project planning. Okay, so we have a process overview that's outlined. Funding is identified, preparing the proposal. The city department that is going to benefit from the funding, they will draft the proposal because they are the subject matter experts, and they have that technical information that is essential to the proposal. They will submit that proposal to the grant administrator. We will conduct an internal review process in the finance department. And then, we will bring an agenda item for the council for this approval of submitting the proposal. The grant administrator will then submit the proposal to the grantor. Once we receive notice of awards, we do another agenda item, and that will be for your acceptance and allocation of the grant funds. That's when the city department begins an internal project set up execution process, and then, we will have our own process in the grant, in the finance department, but the grant administrator will execute, the grant file is established. And the post-award, managing the award. So, the grant administrator is the conduit between the city department and the grantor. And really, this position provides technical assistance, conducts monitoring of grant activities. So, reporting, the city department will submit reports to the grant administrator, and then, she will do an internal review process and process through the finance department. If it's like an expenditure report or service reports, that will go to the grantor. Closing out the award, that's just basically spending extensions, final reporting, and budget reconciliations per grant guidelines. Okay, so, some of the grant funding sources that have been identified to a federal level, we have HUD grants, that's Community Development Block Grants, Emergency Solutions Grants, at-home investment partnership. These are formula grants. And the, the following slides do address City of South Fulton's eligibility for each of those grants. FEMA, we have the firefighter assistance grants. We will be eligible to apply this year for that. Currently, they are, Fulton County is funded under this grant. And one that isn't listed there, that the fire department receives under FEMA is the SAFER grants. That's for second. Department of Justice, we have the JAG grant. Currently, the Fulton County Police Department does receive JAG funds. We will be eligible to apply this year whenever the NOVA is released. And then, Economic Development Administration and U.S. Department of Commerce, under the 2017 to 2019 NOVAs, we'd be eligible to apply for investments for public works and economic development facilities, and the Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. Okay, so, more about the HUD requirements. Specifically, with CDVG, you have to be an entitlement community in order to receive funds for revioling neighborhoods, economic development, providing improved community facilities and services. So, there's basically two grants, public improvements and then, and then, community services. The City of South Fulton does qualify as an entitlement community because it has a population greater than 50,000 individuals. So, we have been in contact with the local community planning and development office. We are working with them to find out more about obtaining the status, being recognized by HUD as an entitlement community. It does require a five-year consolidated plan, which identifies funding priorities, and it's based on the CDVG national objectives. And that usually, that's usually addresses the needs of low and moderate income clientele. The Emergency Solutions Grant, this grant has like a subrecipient type of funding structure. So, entitlement areas do receive funds, and then, they allocate funds to subrecipient agencies, so nonprofit agencies in the community to provide services in the street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, and regular rehousing. So, the target audience, or the target services are for the homeless and at-risk homelessness population. Okay, and then, the last HUD grant is the Home Investment Partnership. And this has that subrecipient structure as well, like the ESG. And it provides funds or services for acquisition of property, rehabilitation, and tenant-based rental assistance. But it is, you have to qualify as a participating jurisdiction in order to receive this funding directly from HUD. And at this time, the City of South Fulton does not meet that participating jurisdiction threshold requirement because we do not have a public housing authority with the demonstrated capacity to carry out the HUD provisions. However, we still can enter into a cooperative, cooperative agreement with the county so that subrecipient agencies or nonprofit agencies within our city limits can apply to Fulton County to access those funds and provide services to our citizens. Okay, on the state level, we have the Department of Transportation, and that's local maintenance and improvement grants. And so, some project examples, sidewalk paving, signage lighting, ADA compliance. And it does require a local administrative project certification process to certify that the local government unit has the capacity and the ability to manage the project and the funds according to state and federal guidelines. Now, through Georgia, the Municipal Association, we do have workers' policy there and the liability policy. So, we are eligible to receive reimbursement at $10,000 for the Workman's Comp Fund and then, the safety and liability grant. And it's just items reimbursed that reduce employee injury, and then, items that reduce the risk of property or liability claim. And those expenditures have to be reported to GMA by October. So, GMA, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Under DRO 4338, Disaster Relief Operation, Fulton County was declared eligible for call assistance. That's Hurricane Irma. So, we could apply to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which enables mitigation measures identified in the local plans to be implemented during recovery. Okay, private sources. We have the Keep America Beautiful and Dr. Pepper Sample Group Park Recycling Infrastructure Grant. We do have a proposal ready for that. And based on the transition of waste management services in parks and rec to the city, the proposal was written as a pilot recycling program to determine the feasibility of a recycling program throughout all of the parks. So, the proposal was written to address recycling within welcome all parks. It includes 22 recycling bins, 14 exterior, and a interior bins. Rails to Trails Conservancy, this, we would be eligible to apply next year. That's just based on when the NOVA was released this year. So, funding supports projects for building and improving multi-use trails. And then, Georgia Pacific Foundation, those, some projects funded under this are public school programs, job training initiatives, equipment for a local fire department, conservation programs, like the Atlanta Belt Line Partnership. So, our next steps are to coordinate with city departments as they begin to develop plans, network with comparable city grant administrators, so we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the City of Roswell, develop policies and procedures, continue pursuing the HUD entitlement status, and establish cooperative grant agreements with the county as needed, apply for eligible grants as NOVA is released. Any questions, concerns with that?
Overall change in the area of CDVG? Has, has the federal government cut funding over the last year?
Well, CDVG has been, there hasn't been any significant cuts, but it has been dwindling through the years.
And every year, it becomes a targeted area.
Yes, it does, you are correct.
Have you ever seen significant cuts in CDVG?
Yes, sir.
All right, good.
I am so glad you're here. Thank you very, very much for that informative presentation. So, thank you, and I know it will be given a lot of grants. My question to you is if the council for state runs, or, you know, this individual or president come across opportunities, how do you want us to handle their process? Do you just email you and say, hey, you're looking into this, or, or the city manager?
Okay, well, I mean, so the, the problem with that process would be that identifying where it fits within the city department structure. But I could work with that, so yes.
No, you could, just some thought.
Right, yes. You're right, and that is something that will be addressed in the policies and procedures, for sure.
Thank you, I'd like to see you as well. I have a question around the CDVG grants. In the past, we did get a, the county got a CDVG grant to help with demolition. Is it possible for you to inquire if we can still get that similar type grant to help us with demolishing some of the blighted properties in our city? And also, an area of interest would be redevelopment grants. Will you also be seeking, I know the priority is to try to go for the big federal grants that we were getting while, we were unincorporated with the county, so I know you're going to be looking at what grants we were getting, the county was getting on behalf of our area, and trying to secure those grants. But will you be looking to secure redevelopment grants as well?
Both.
Okay.
Yes, both. So, as in terms of CDVG funding, and you know, the demolition and swimming flights, that is stuff that will go into the consolidated plan.
Okay.
Yes, that will be approved by HUD. And it, and it does come with a 30-day inanimate period, public comment period.
So, even though we don't have, so even though we don't have a housing authority, maybe I didn't understand it, are, will we still be eligible for those grants?
Yes, that was just one of the requirements needed to qualify as a participating jurisdiction under the Home Investment Partnership Grant Program.
Okay.
We can still access those funds through the county, even though we don't meet that threshold requirement.
And I have one more question. For law, for law enforcement, for public safety? I know Atlanta, the municipality is, they'll take some type of grant and go to, um, redevelop one of their blighted properties, well, neighborhoods, not properties, neighborhoods, and then, they turn around and finance those homes below interest rates or law enforcement officers. Are you familiar with that type of?
Workforce housing.
Okay.
I've, I've looked into some workforce housing, but I can definitely look some more and, and find out real information for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
One other grant that supports me, and that is the SAFER grant.
The what?
SAFER grant.
Yes.
Yeah, how, how are we coming along with that?
Currently, the county has funding for it. I'm not, I'm not really sure, as, as being scheduled with the fire department, but the blog will tell you, is there to be funding currently right now? I don't know about the transfer of that, once they come over, but we will be eligible to apply, yes.
That's something important we need to note, too. When you come over there, bet it.
I didn't hear you ask, I don't know, for the council, but the National Recreation Association? If you could maybe add that to, if you can, I know you already forgot a long one, but they actually do, they will have to, but they will help.
Yes, thank you very much.
That takes you to either lay in city council comments or to the executive session.
That's how we, I think that was a motion for executive session. We actually go on it, and take a day, motion, I don't know.
Second by Councilmember Gons.
Probably move to second, in discussion, I'll go to favor.
There's a motion made during the executive sess, session today regarding personnel. This was to discuss the permanent city attorney. It was moved to appoint the Amelia C. Walker firm of Ventura, Denmark, and Minnefield at the same rate as the current interim city attorney and retain the rather the same rate as the current interim city attorney and retain the Robbins firm for litigation and annexation representation.
Mayor, if I, if I could have a second, you know, obviously, we're very, we've been honored to serve the city. We would suggest, you know, we don't want to continue without the confidence of the majority of council, and we suggest just making a clean break and not keeping us for litigation and annexation purposes. And we are happy to transition with the attorney and suggest a 30-day transition. Or, or if she would like to do it sooner, that's fine as well.
Let me just say, I'm sad to hear. I'm truly sad to hear that. Because your firm has done us well. Your firm has done us well even through annexations, even through cityhood, even to the point that you had gone to the Supreme Court and played our case and won. I don't feel good right now. I don't feel good. I may have felt better if you had said that you would have taken the litigation. I, that was a surprise to me, that you'd take the litigation. But I do understand, I do understand. I'm just, I'm just upset.
And mayor, you know, obviously, that's something, you know, Josh and the firm can talk about, but, you know, if the council doesn't have confidence in us, we understand that, and we just think it may just make things easier all the way around.
There's a quote here, I mean...
I just, yes, Mark, I have a question.
I just, I just want to say, I am extremely confident in you all. I think that there is, I don't think there's anyone in this county that is not confident in your ability to litigate, especially around annexation. You've seen what you've done, you've performed, we think you're amazing. So I don't, I don't want you to think that we don't think you're amazing, particularly in efforts, and that I have enjoyed with you over these past few weeks.
And I have.
I do think also, that kind of changes the vote. Because the vote would not have any particular person. My motion was, let me stop right there. Let me stop. Although, I think, no, I think it's executive session stuff, I'm going to stop right there. But I think that there's issues.
All right, I take, I, I don't...
I will say it has been a truly, it truly has been an honor for all of us to serve the city.
Where is that?
You have a, let me, hold on one second.
Oh, you don't have a court. There you go, good jury.